Okay, your life commissioner.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hey, good morning. You're tuning in to the Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session. It is Thursday, February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is nine oh one A M. This is a virtual meeting, and for public attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube Channel or join by calling three six oh two five two nine zero two zero, pin number one, two, three, four. My name is Carolina Mahia. I am Chair of the Board. I am joined today by Commissioner Gary Edwards. Commissioner Ty Mensah is excused for this week. County Manager Ramirez Chavez is joining us from the boardroom, as well as our staff member, Jenica Machado, and some members from the E D C. Today, we will be discussing a Thurston Strong update. So with that, I'm not sure who I'm handing this off to.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a matter of background, and this to the benefit of the public. The Thurston County Board of County Commissioners has been supported with the Thurston Strong. The Thurston Strong initiative was created really as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. As to how we, there can be a consolidated help to businesses and other organizations that have been affected by the pandemic. From the start, the Board of County Commissioners in the county has trusted the Thurston Strong to distribute federal money in terms of assistance, grants. That began in two thousand and twenty with American Rescue Plan. Also, the Board has allocated close to ten million dollars to continue that effort. And I think that is really the result of how effective Thurston Strong and all those individuals involved have been in making sure they meet the mission of helping the citizens, the business, and everybody involved who has been affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic. So I just want to stay now at the beginning in terms of, for the benefit of the public. There's non-news for all of you about this, but anyways, so Michael, Jason, who wants to take up?
I think I'll go. I have, I have a slide presentation that I'll share on the screen in a second. And just for some context, I'm Jason Robertson, Jay Robertson and Company, and I'm the coordinator for Thurston Strong. Kind of the intermediary between all the partners, getting things figured out. How do we, how do we get this running on the ground? And Jenica is my direct contact with the county. And Michael is sort of the manager of all the inner workings, the fiduciary for all the funds that deals with things like, you know, how do you spend the money? Where did it go? How did they get it out? Who writes the checks? And so I think I'll do the presentation and then leave Jenica and Michael to help answer questions as we go along or at the end. So here we go. Everybody can see it?
Yeah.
Just a quick reminder for those who are maybe seeing this for the first time, the Thurston Strong core team is Thurston County, the three major cities, and then our major community economic development organizations in Thurston County, as well as South Houston College, Pack Mountain, Port of Olympia, and the Community Foundation of South Peget Sound. And I believe Mindy from the Community Foundation is with us today if we have questions for the nonprofit branch of our work. So we're, you know, this started a couple of years ago, and I just want to do a quick recap of, you know, what we did from day one to present, and then I'll share with you more detail what's happening right now. So one of the first things we did is we set up a one eight hundred hotline. When people were panicking at the very beginning, what was this going to mean to them? Where could they turn for resources? And we created a website, and I'm glad we did that because at the very beginning, there was a lot of confusion. We were able to help. E D C filled in more than fifteen calls over the last year and a half from businesses looking for, for help. The websites had nineteen thousand unique visitors. I think we're going to top twenty before long here. You know, in one day, especially when we started promoting the availability of resources, we had nine hundred users in one day. So it's been a real help. Just a reminder, you've seen this slide before. This, we received pass-through funding, federal pass-through funding from the county and the cities Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater, as well as some other investments. And this is how we spent it during the first phase of our response plan. Childcare was, was and is an emergency, and so we spent the largest sum on providers, trying to keep them open, being able to retain workers, subsidize at least some parent household costs. We created a bridge grant for micro businesses. Subsequently, a restaurant retail grant because of the unique impacts they were going through. We, we invested in nonprofits that are doing a lot of the recovery work and having a hard time fundraising at the levels they did prior to the pandemic. We had a targeted agriculture food systems grant, business training for those who had to repurpose their mission or go from a brick and mortar to an online portal for sales. And we also distributed over eighty thousand dollars in personal protective gear, masks, hand sanitizer at the very beginning to get things started. And then this is just a map of what that looked like geographically. The distribution of grants really was countywide. And in large part, I think the addition of the agricultural grant, the restaurant retail really helped us penetrate different areas of the community. I don't think that we had to decline assistance of some kind to any entity that asked and was eligible. All of our eligibility requirements followed federal guidelines. And we've, on this first round of grant issuance, received a clean audit. So I want to talk a little bit about what we're doing with Phase Two. As you know, the county is the primary funder of the initiatives that we are moving forward with. Cities of Olympia, Tumwater, and the port have also contributed. But I want to kind of tackle this from the county's perspective, what your original objectives were. I'll note that this being round two, the ARPA dollars come with a lot more strings. So it's a lot harder to distribute the funds. I guess they're more careful this time, which is a good thing. But it just, it'll take us more time. The good news is we have a lot more time than we had in the first round to get things done. So nonprofit grant program, this is being coordinated by the Community Foundation. Of course, the E D C is still the fiscal agent, but we started with a pot of nine hundred thousand dollars and threw, really, today, we've distributed six hundred and ninety-two thousand of that nine hundred thousand. The grants range from five to twenty thousand, depending on the size of the entity. And we, we are really sort of moving fastest for those organizations that are doing COVID relief, food service, or whatever, a shelter for people impacted by COVID. Microbusiness grant, we're, we're hoping to issue four hundred and fifty grants at the ten thousand dollar level. We do allow people to ask for less if they have less impact. They have to show us the impact. Sort of like it was structured under the PPP program that the, the feds set up so that if you have, you know, quarter one, two thousand versus quarter one, two thousand and two, you can show ten thousand dollars of loss, and it's COVID-related, we can fund you. That is going at the pace I expected. Like I said, it's, as the pandemic has lingered, so has the troubles that businesses face, and so we're seeing a pretty steady stream of people in need and able to serve them. The ag program, grant program is now up and running. It took a little longer to start. The good news is that W S U Extension is helping to coordinate this, and they hired an outreach coordinator who is really picking things up. So even though we've only distributed sixty thousand, the one point one applications are streaming in now, and it just takes a little while to process and turn them around. But I'm feeling pretty good about that program now. And just to be clear, it's, it's not just farmers. It's a food systems grant, so that could be value-added producers and distributors and so forth. We also carved out a hundred thousand dollars for food assistance. That was buying food boxes that can be distributed to nonprofits to help with hunger, food relief for those in need. In Phase Two, we're also adding some worker programs as people are unable to go back to their original job or looking for a better way to provide for their household. And the first one is the Thurston Works Job Champions Network. It's a partnership between the E D C, who's the fiscal agent, Pack Mountain, who is the overall coordinator, and the Community Foundation, who's helping to identify the nonprofits. And the idea is that we can help support the cost of an employee working at a nonprofit. The employee is likely, but not necessarily, a dislocated worker or someone trying to create a new career pathway that serves an important need for a nonprofit in their COVID response efforts. That's, that's a partnership of funding between the county, the city of Olympia, and to some extent, the city of Tumwater. And that will, that will, I think all contracts are now signed, and that'll be up and running by March. Something that's really cool about this, we think it's a leveraged investment. If we can make it work, and it has impacts that we can document, Pack Mountain feels like the state and federal government may continue to invest in that and extend the life and the opportunity for more people. Worker training, again, this is so far the county and city of Olympia have invested in two versions of this. There's, it's, it's coming together. It will be in full swing in March as well. There's a combination of training programs. One is focused on homeless people trying to re-enter the workforce. The city of Olympia is funding that. They'll have access to different kinds of training, from construction corps to learning how to bore for fiber channels, hospitality training. It'll be coordinated by the Thurston Chamber Workforce Division and in partnership with Pack Mountain Workforce Development Council. So just kind of a visual on the total, on the business grants alone, not just, not nonprofits or ag, but just the business grants. Hundred and forty-seven issued to date, fifty pending in the hopper. These are the industries that they've gone to. So food services, personal services, professional services, retail, childcare, and so forth. This pretty much parallels the impacts that we see in the data with job loss or revenue loss. And in terms of all grants geographically, here's where they've gone. We, we process grants wherever they come from. We have promoted them countywide, but they're predominantly coming from Olympia right now. Who is the largest employer enterprise host in Thurston County? I expect that'll shift a little more to these other locations over time. The county allocated a hundred thousand dollars for entertainment recovery. I think we'll, we should invite Experience Olympia to come talk to you about what they've, they've done. But they have a new app that promotes tourism, and if you're, if you're visiting Capital State Forest and you have the app on your phone, it'll recommend a nearby place to eat or another entertainment experience to try to capture some of that visitor spending. And Michael can talk more about this in a minute, but we think we're, we've been awarded a grant to complete our Economic Development District S E D's plan, which would allow us to compete for more federal dollars. That would be a four-county partnership, and there's a, there's a whole separate presentation on that. But I'm, I'm hopeful that we're going to get moving on that this year and be up and running by next. We have a little bit of money for business resiliency training. That, again, is just helping people adapt their business plans or processes to be able to survive in this kind of new market they find themselves in. And then what I must have clicked over is we have a stand-up grant that's going to launch on March first. It's called the Target Zone Business Startup Grant. And the eligibility will be for people who want to start new enterprises in target zones. Target zones are essentially areas of Thurston County that have higher-than-average poverty or susceptibility to job loss because of the nature of the businesses hardest hit by COVID. We're hoping that that will stimulate opportunities for underrepresented populations. And we have a nice, it'll be, it'll kind of intertwine with our BIPOC Business Advisory Task Force that will be up next month as well. Some of the members of that task force will be part of the review team that looks at proposals from folks, and that's a longer conversation. Happy to answer questions in a minute. These are just for you to read on your own, but the, we've got a lot of good stories in from folks that, that access the funds, you know, stories about being able to stay open because of them, stories of being able to keep employees, hope, appreciation, that we're a community that looks after one another. And I think Myra will have some stories about that for you in her presentation following mine. But you can just see just the range of different organizations that we've been able to support. These are entities that we sometimes take for granted. You know, they're just there. We've, you know, maybe accessed different ones over time as we've kind of aged in place in Thurston County, taking your kids to the children's museum or attending a concert. But they've been a great risk with, with a real challenge to, you know, remain afloat with no revenues coming in from ticket sales, and so we're pleased to be able to help. I think this one thing that stood out is just, I think probably around forty percent of our business grants have gone to BIPOC businesses, which is pretty incredible. I'm very proud of the team for the direct engagement inclusivity. Somebody who came down here to see what we were doing was pretty amazed compared to other places that they work in about how Thurston County has been inclusive with its recovery funds. And so that's, that's something that will stick with me for a long time. I think just the ag market has been really tricky. I'm glad that we have an outreach coordinator. As you know, farmers in particular are busy, and they're not always checking their email, and so, and they have unique challenges with market access and what products to grow and how to reach consumers. And so we have some good stories about how we've been able to help at least a few of them get to the next step. So I will pause there and invite conversation or questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards, question, comments?
Yes, Justin, could you tell me just a little more about that app? I'm not, I'm kind of tech challenged, and how that's going to work on direction? Because I think we've got a request maybe coming in to do some kind of a funding under our tourism package on that.
Hi, Jenica or Michael, have you, I haven't been as close to that conversation for the last month or two.
Yeah, I have a little additional information. So my understanding, and Michael, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, is the Tread app was developed by, on the state level and is being rolled out through the different regions and V C Bs throughout Washington State. And so our V C B Experience Olympia and Beyond is buying into the Tread app. And so what, like Jason had mentioned, what it will allow people to do is when they are doing outdoor recreation, it connects them directly to local businesses, restaurants, retailers that are within the area. And so it will increase the connection between outdoor tourism and buying local.
Okay. Oh, and also, Commissioner Edwards, I kind of left out some other things. They, they did a big spread. Was it King Five, Jenica? Were they, okay, they, they featured a bunch of destinations in Thurston County, including Bountiful Byway, and, and I think that was a big hit, but I haven't seen the numbers myself. Michael?
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Yes, I do have a couple of questions and, you know, and I have concerns. I will go out ahead and say that just because I've been getting a lot of calls from community members from all sides and just access to these grants have been very difficult. And I understand that at first the guidelines changed, but there's a huge need in the community. And it's been, you know, just seeing the numbers right now, you know, why, why so little? And I'm seeing that Community Foundation got group with this because they are a part of the E D C. And I know they were really quick to release some of their grants, but the other grants are not being released as quickly. So I kind of want to see what the holdup is. Is there not being outreach done? And I know a lot of community members are getting frustrated, so I'm just trying to see where the gap is.
Mike, I'll let you talk to that. I haven't heard personally of any frustration yet, so.
Yeah, we, it's really good feedback. Thank you very much, Commissioner. And please don't ever hesitate to have your contacts call us directly. We set up the one eight hundred lines specifically for that, and just for folks that are catching in. Just phone number for your people out there in the call is eight 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 two one six six five two. Jason mentioned that we've taken over fifteen thousand phone calls in the last year and a half. Well, that's, that's a, that's a big chunk when you consider there's about fifteen thousand businesses in Thurston County. We have a dedication that every one of our calls is returned within twelve hours. And we've even taken calls on Saturday and Sunday. And so, you know, we process those grants as quickly as we can as when they come in. You know, each grant is, it's an interesting case in itself. When you think about what we're trying to do also is to get to yes for them, not necessarily with this grant, but to be yes in the future, their success. So a lot of times that grant applicant will become one of our business retention programs, and we'll feed them into a lot of the programs throughout the, throughout the region, either at our Center for Business Innovation or within our partner group. We've done outreach to the South County through the steady environment. We've done presentations to all the chambers of commerce, the Rotary Clubs. It's in every one of our newsletters. Myra will be talking about her role in pushing out her resources to all the groups that she's been cultivating and making sure that we're meeting people where they're at. So I'm a little bit concerned that you're hearing that the grants have been not accessible. Every one of the calls and applications we get, we touch with a phone call or an email within four hours. And so the amount of grants that actually have been denied ultimately, some of them go into a parking lot where we have to do some more due diligence on whether or not their application is correct or their business licenses are up to date. Because as you know, we cannot provide a grant to, we have to provide grants within a window that is, that is appropriate with the guidelines. And so there is quite a bit of due diligence that we have to do for each one of the grants. For example, the last round that we did with first round of Thurston Strong took us about three hours per grant applicant to get to yes. Right now, it's about seven and a half. That's just a, not necessarily, and the staff is slower, but in the sense that we've added a number of guidelines based upon what's been provided. So it really is more than double the time that takes a process, but the amount of time that it gets from an applicant to out the door is not appreciably longer. So I'm a little bit concerned that you're hearing that it's not being pushed out and they're not available to people.
I would just like to understand yet if there are specific examples of who's frustrated with what, because we, I haven't heard anything, so I'd like to address it.
Of course, it's been, it's been some minority businesses, it's been farmers. I've heard specifically from a couple of farmers who've been really frustrated. And I've heard some from some minority businesses. And so I asked for this update from Thurston Strong because I kind, I wanted to see where we're at on this. And I, I know that there was a delay in, in, in getting the funds out because of the guidelines changing and trying to see where everything that the commissioners approved, you know, how could that be? How could that fit into the treasury guidelines? But just hearing those concerns from community members and I have sent some to Jenica and I've sent some to the website and asked them to access it through there. But you know, the concerns are still there. I'm still getting the calls. I'm still getting the emails. And so I, I'm just, you know, Michael is saying that there is a fast turnaround on that. And I'm, you know, I've heard from some community members that the applications are quite lengthy and difficult. And so I, I'm not sure, that's the second part of my question. Especially when we're sending these to different community members, is there assistance to fill out these applications and what does that look like?
Jason, I'll jump in on the assistance, what we do with technical assistance with a call. So if a call comes into us, our application comes in, we, you know, we, we get on the phone or email right away. How was the application? What were you having difficulties with? What can we do to help you to get to it? So some of the times we have to go back to the business or the organization. And so this information is incorrect. We cannot verify that. Please give us some documentation. And we actually work with them to provide that documentation to, to get it right. And that's why, you know, our time per case has gone up from three and a, three hours to seven and a half. Is that sometimes what's coming to us, we can't do anything about the information they provide to us, but we case manage every single one when we actually hit the go button in December, when we finally got the word to go. We, we process them fairly quickly. So again, I'm really concerned that you're hearing from folks that it's not accessible or the application is a little bit too difficult. I'll ask Jason to talk a little bit about the construct of the application. And I'm not justifying it, Commissioner Mahia. I'm saying that the, what I am trying to convey is the process was pretty elegant that we went through in the logic space, but Jason, maybe you talk about how quickly you wanted to break that as easy as possible.
The application, I mean, we've heard universally, they thank you. That's the easiest application humanly possible for the amount of money, of federal money that you're providing for us. So I, I, you know, you have to show, the difference between round one and round two is we didn't necessarily ask for proof of injury. With the ARPA funds, we're required to ask for that. And if you haven't kept your books or your, your injury is hard to define, it takes longer than it did last time. But like Michael said, we have people, we we're, we're about getting to yes, if you're eligible and helping you figure out how to show that harm. And so we move as fast as humanly possible and we work at it day and night. So I, you know, if there's ever anyone in particular that has a particular problem, they should just reach out. Every email that I see through the website, I find the right person, I put them in touch with them and I say get to yes. So I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, it saddens me to hear that if there's real frustration, we have processes in place to, to help.
Yeah, our, our team, our team actually meets on a regular, almost daily basis on the batch of applicants that come in, Commissioner. We review everyone, everyone that has a question that goes into a, a group think. And we problem solve every grant application that comes in. And so we get to a yes, it may take us, if there's a problem with that application or concern, it may take a week for the applicant to get back to us. But man, we return that pretty quick and we track that pretty well. The system we have in place is pretty, pretty consistent about tracking all applicants. And like Jason, I'm really heartbroken to hear that people find it arduous. You know, we do put people, we ask, we offer people to enter into our programs for our scale-up program or our best program or other training programs that we have, they're all scholarship and they're all available to them. So some of the work that I know Myra will be talking about is meeting people where they're at. We realize that we've had to change the way that we do it, work at the Economic Development Council, but a big part of that is meeting people where they're at. But so I'm, please feel free to send people directly to me. My, my email is mk@thurstonedec and my personal cell phone is 480-8781. Please send them to us directly. We'll make sure they get, they get addressed. But again, the hotline number is the best way to reach our technical service providers. We run it nine thirty to three thirty every day. We have a commitment to four hour phone call and that's it. And we'll stay and actually every turn, phone calls on Saturday and Sunday. But again, the number is 888-821-6652. So, but thank you for that concern. We'll continue to monitor that and make sure that we're truly addressing all those issues that come in.
Great. And questions from the county manager or assistant county manager?
No, no ma'am, thank you.
Okay. And then you did say Ms. Pena was going to do a presentation as well? Okay. So the floor to her. Thank you.
So what I may, thank you very much, Commissioner. I've asked Myra to give a, a discussion about the work that she's endeavoring to do. This is, as you remember, when we stood up this position, the BIPOC Business Community Liaison was the notion that it wasn't necessarily just about the resources found at the Economic Development Council. It was the resources found at Thurston Strong. The resources found at our partners, at the Chambers of Commerce, Enterprise for Equity, the Minority Business Development Association, Washington State Department of Commerce, and Myra is that bridge. And she's always providing feedback as to how we reevaluate and audit our access points. So we've asked Myra to talk about her programs, some of her successes and moving forward. And really love to hear your feedback as to those access points and the veracity of how we're addressing the business needs. So Myra, I'm going to turn it over to you. I'll stop talking and turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioners. And let me get my PowerPoint. Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so I'll just start with a little introduction about myself. My name is Myra Pena and I am the new BIPOC Business Community Liaison here at the EDC. And my work is to connect community entrepreneurs to the resources that we have both within the EDC and regionally. So, and we'll just leave it at that for now. To kind of jump here in this, in this screen. The, the position itself was created to, to make that bridge between the small businesses, BIPOC businesses and the many resources in the community. I know I, I heard earlier some talk about the challenges and I'll jump right to some of these grants. The Thurston Strong grant that is going on right now and some of the challenges that minority businesses are having in accessing these grants. And I think, you know, I, I want to address how much I understand those challenges and, and the reason I, I believe for my position. And, you know, I can read all the, you know, the, the, the wonderful words that I can, what I'd like to express is my personal reason why I think this position exists. And that is simply addressing what, what was spoken, spoken about by Commissioner Mahia earlier and the feedback from the minority businesses. And that's approachability. You know, when, when, when one considers approaching a group of leaders like we're looking at right now, you know, these are, you know, these are your government leaders, your commissioners, your, your executive directors, your, your really strong, big community leaders. And that can be very intimidating for anybody, myself included. And so my position was created to be someone who can go out there into the community and be approachable. And I know we have, you know, going to these grants and Michael expressed that a lot of, well, all the grants are really worked with as a case management in a sense. You know, I'd like to give some examples of some of how, how we dive so deeply in that case management and I'll share my own experiences. Specifically, I work with the, the minority business grant applications. And, you know, the variety of applicants is, and the work involved is quite, quite broad. You know, I love those grant applicants that send everything perfectly, you know? They'll send your, the three documents, right? Their W9, two P and Ls showing their loss. It's like, wow, great. And then we have, you know, a huge majority that really takes a lot of support in handholding. I, I love that because it gives me an opportunity to really connect with the community and to do the work of building capacity, not only for now, but as we continue. So for example, we had a lady, an entrepreneur who's blind. And, you know, you know, talked to her a number of times over the phone, having her upload documents. I mean, at one point she sent a hundred documents. You know, and, and we tried to streamline this, going through all the documents, saying, hey, those documents, there's nothing there. You know, it's that handholding, it takes time, but it's very rewarding. I, and I will share another one and I don't want to take too much of the, the commissioner's time, but just before Christmas, I know everyone's aware of the fires downtown in downtown Olympia. And we, you know, the team that does meet almost every day, we got together and we said, you know, what can we do for these folks down there? You know, we just kind of, okay, I'll take this one, I'll take that one, I'll take this one. We took all those names. We individually called those people, spoke with them, listened to, you know, what they experienced and, and offered what we could. One of them in particular was Augustine from Dos Tacos Dos Hermanos who had lost all his documents. You know, just, just helping them. Some of them didn't know about the grants. So they were like, wow, this is great, helping them. You know, they were like, well, what can we, what can we send with the fire? Everything's burned. And offering them the options from our insight of what they can send, what they cannot send. And I, I, you know, I have a quote somewhere in there, you know, even before, you know, the grant was processed, Augustine emailed me and, and said, you know, so, you know, connecting with people in bilingualy also, you know, you don't know how much I appreciate this, thank you. This is to kind of address some of the, I call it the high touch of the work that we're doing. Okay. And that's a little bit about the work. Again, also reaching out and connecting to, you know, my work connecting with other community resources, including the South Sound BIPOC Roundtable, which was founded by Makita Hart, one of our candidates for the task force. You know, great place where, you know, BIPOC communities can come together as a hub, connecting with Cielo. And, and I know they're going through some challenges and, I mean, not challenges, some changes in leadership and a number of the other community resources. So I'd like to jump into one of the things that I was tasked with was to stand up a task force for the BIPOC business community. And I'd like to just talk a little bit about them now. Okay, so we have reached out to a number of small business owners and community leaders. You know, as a pre, pre this meeting, you know, to, to, to see if this is something they want to do to be part of this task force. And a number of these people are very interested in this. These are community leaders, small business leaders. So I'll just quickly touch on, on Visna. Let's see, we'll go here. I'll look and make sure I have my notes on. Stephanie Chalmondali, she owns kindergarten in the garden. She has worked as a filmmaker. She is also what she calls a social entrepreneur and growing local cooperative food. She's very excited in being part of this task force. Makita Hart, I talked a little bit about her. She's the owner of the barbecue Sergeant Hart's barbecue sauce. She's also one of the co-founders of the South Sound BIPOC Roundtable, which is South Sound Business Directory, which is a free business directory. Then we also have Visna Hoy, who is an attorney. She is one of our grant applicants who we had, you know, many phone calls to help get her to yes. Back and forth quite a number of times. And yes, it did take time to work that with, with the applicant. She is one of the Thurston County Chamber Incubent participants and she started a small legal business here with another partner, helping BIPOC community with their, with issues. Also, we have Tony Taylor, who is a super dynamic podcast business that he owns and he brings in minorities and BIPOC leaders in the community and throughout speaking about resources for our small businesses. We also have Miguel Pineda, who is the owner of Porcupine Media Downtown Olympia on Fourth Avenue. He is certainly involved in a lot of community events and a strong community leader. And we have Maria, no, let's see. Maria, I have a hard time with her, she's a long name, Ana Maria Mesa Andrade. I've just recently met her myself. She is the owner of the Port Taco Truck and has lived through a lot of the change, a lot of challenges during COVID and also in starting her own small business. And so these are some of the people with these experiences that we are hoping to have as part of our BIPOC task force that Jason spoke about. Real quick, we also have folks from the community in the private, public and nonprofit sector. We have Parfait Bruseli from the South, South Sound Community College. And she is the Chief Diversity Officer there. We have Greg Burnett, who is one of the leaders at the Shaheles Tribe. Marcus Gillespie, who is the Director of the Washington State Lottery, who also has a pulse on community issues. Yin Hun, who is a City of Olympia Council member and Corbett Mosley, who's the Director of Workforce Services at Pack Mountain. And just an overview of the task force, we are asking the task force to help us identify barriers, adapt systems and facilitate into our neural pathways. And in the BIPOC community, we, they will be, it's an advisory body and will be bringing the, the findings directly to the EDC. And we do anticipate to convene that task force in mid-March. And where do we go from here? As you, I'm sure know, the work that we're doing is community building, which does take time. The outreach, you know, I've been reaching out to pastors and churches. Again, reaching out to individual business owners and doing that wonderful work of building trust, of helping people connect with these resources and of being approachable. And I think I already shared this quote. Thank you so much, Commissioners, for your time. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions, comments, Commissioner Edwards?
Questions, comments, Commissioner Edwards?
No, I think that was a good presentation. Got it. I think, you know what I get out of this and your comments and, and I think oftentimes we as individual commissioners hear from folks that maybe have frustrations that don't necessarily pass it on to others. And so I think, I think that's what's going on here to a degree. On not just this issue, but on many, many other issues. You've got a constituent group that's willing to talk up and tell you things maybe they don't want to pass on. And I see that all the time. So I appreciate your comments. No, I'm good. Thanks.
And if I can jump in, if there's any minority business or any business at all that, you know, that you would like to send my way, please do. I put my email in the chat box and I would love to connect with them and help them. I do speak Spanish fluently, read and write. And aside from that, I've also worked with other minority, minorities and very patient. And again, I enjoy the work I do. So I'll, I'll share my information there. I don't speak chat and so.
My questions are in regards to Commissioner Edwards, did you have any additional comments?
No, I just said, thank you.
Okay. My question is, we set aside 3.34 on minority business investment. And under there, we set the New Minority Business Advisory Council, which I, I'm seeing that's something that's being worked on. I'm guessing you're the staff to manage and support the council. Outreach to establish CDFI letter locally, help launch community cultural center. I, I was just wondering, and then, you know, we would be doing a hundred thousand dollar grants to minority businesses. And so I was wondering, what's the update on that? What's the breakdown of that?
So I would like to maybe, is Jason still here?
Yeah, Jason had to log off. I'm sorry. I could try to answer that question, Myra and Commissioner. Jenica is in as well, you can fill in. But that grant, Commissioner will be launched live. Application will be receiving on January, February, March first. And the grant application will be open until March first through May first. It's a little bit of a longer window that we realize than normally is, but the idea is that this is a pretty good detailed grant. We've advertised it, preliminary advertised it for seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars per. And in targeted low to moderate income regions of the county. Now, we've had some pretty good feedback from folks that'd be interested. And one of the reasons why we've extended that timeline is to make sure that our resources, that Myra is pushing now are available to people to ensure that they're putting together a grant application and a business plan that is, that is viable. We want to make sure that all of our resource provided is available to people as a resource to kind of build that application for them. And we want to be a resource. We don't want anybody to just go in cold and say, well, we want a grant, we got a great idea for a business startup or an organizational startup. Because there's a lot to it. We want to make sure those applications are very, very strong. So we did a test yesterday on the application, internal test. We're refining that application and we're confident that on March first, we will hit the ground running with that grant application. So it'll go live on March first. Again, it'll be open from March first to May first. Jenica, do you have any other kind of details there?
I, I think you, you touched on, on the biggest points. I think the only additional piece of detail is that it'll be up to five grants at that seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollar level. And so it'll be a competitive grant process in which we'll have a selection committee to determine which grants are awarded up to five.
So you only said, I'm, I'm, I have a question about that. So just looking at, at what was approved, we did, so 2.9 million grants and so it would be 290 grants at 10,000 each. And then the hundred thousand, which I'm guessing that's a breakdown between seventy-five and a hundred. So where are we on the 290 grants at 10,000 each?
So I believe that part of that number was shared during Jason's overview. Eighty-two grants have been awarded in that category. And so I, I believe that that's where they're at.
Yeah, we're, we're at just about 1.4 million. No, 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 that's the wrong number. I'm sorry. 1.4 million, I have to break that number out, but we're about over a quarter of the way through that, those funds that you identified there, Commissioner.
So out of the 147 that was reported that have been approved, eighty-two work for minority businesses?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and then, let's see. I'll put my questions to rest for this. County manager, do you have any questions, comments?
No, ma'am.
Assistant county manager? Okay, and I don't have any additional. And Commissioner Edwards, do you have anything additionally to add?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for coming this morning and, and doing this presentation and updating us with what's going on. And I, let's see, assistant county manager?
Just since we're wrapping up, I want to say how much I appreciate the EDC in Thurston Strong. Especially with the ever-changing landscape of the federal money. You've been really great partners and worked through all the details with us. You're providing us everything. We need to be successful with the feds in handling this money. And it's just been a pleasure working with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Thank you very much. I'll pass that on to our team. Absolutely. They'll, glad to hear that. Very hard work, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Okay, with that, if there are no additional comments or questions, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you again for doing this presentation this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.